All right, we are live.
Okay.
Good morning, Crosby.
Good morning, y'all ready for me to begin?
Yes.
All right, this one is, this year's pretty straightforward for us. I'm not really asking for much. I just want to show you what we've got going on, really, for next year. If you look, one of our increases is the state of Mississippi gave us another ADA. Our indictments in Biloxi increased over 28% last year. And so what that means is, every year, we're now getting 28% more indictments. So if it's indicted, you can only imagine how many cases, you know, our indictment rates between 70 and 80%. So there's another 20% that we're getting that are. That's the bad news, I guess. The good news is, there are good cases. Biloxi has a lot of cameras, which means, if you commit a crime in Biloxi, you're getting caught. And we're prosecuting the cases. So that's not a bad thing. So if there's one thing we can take from that, is we need more cameras in Gulfport. But, right now, I went to the legislature last year, and I showed them the increases in cases. Our district, Harrison Hancock and Stone County, is the busiest circuit court district in the state. But we're also the best. The president of the Mississippi Prosecutors Association this year, we're doing other things. I went to the legislature, showed them our statistics. I did not think, y'all gave us a part-time ADA last year, which was fantastic help, because it not only helps us in Biloxi, we're also covering for the county court for domestic violences on Friday. So I think that's really good bang for our buck. They gave us a new ADA. Great. So the only thing I'm asking for increases on are for the things that go along with it, the stuff that we have to pay. The other, now it goes to, what problems does that cause us in Biloxi? Because that's where I'm putting the ADA. I'm putting your part-time one you gave me last year over there, and I'm putting the new one that I hire August 21st over there, because that's where they need it. Now, over there, the footprint of our office, we're already overflowing. So what we're, we met with Chance Record, because they've got all that space downstairs. And they are willing to give us some of their space downstairs to build a secure file room, so that we can move our files that we've been storing upstairs downstairs. Good bang for our buck. There's a, I don't know if y'all know what a Lettrever filing system is? I didn't know what it is, y'all probably did. It's the electronic one. Well, those things cost $15,000 to move it from upstairs to downstairs. We talked to Connie. Connie had one that broke, so she was gonna get another one. We asked her if we could have the broken one. We found out that we could fix it with just a battery. We found somebody who still works on them. So we were super pumped. Well, then Connie's other one broke. So then she said, "I'm gonna need that one back." And that's kinda where we left it. I get it. I don't need a Lettrever. It'd be nice. I just didn't want one to go to waste. We can get filing cabinets to go down there. We're still trying to figure out exactly what it's gonna look like. I met with John and Angela, and talked about how we would build it out to build a wall. That's still in the works, but it's going to need to happen, because this is our Biloxi office. All right? You can obviously see the wear and tear in the office, all that. So they're gonna redo that. But then we also took down a regular wall, and we're gonna build two offices. One in, one here, for the new full-time ADA, and then this little one for the part-time ADA.
Are we doing facilities maintenance?
They're already doing it. They came right in, and, I mean, it was quick.
I'm talking about the floor.
Oh, the floor, yeah, the floor hasn't been...
It's always gonna be an issue.
Is it?
We can cover it. The law says you don't have to pull it up, you can cover it.
Okay.
But we'll have to outsource a...
Yep, and I trust y'all, and it's not like there's a fire going on in there. It's just, I go to other buildings, and I'm like, "That looks a lot more professional than what I'm dealing with there." So that's, that's what this request was for, for the, for the file, to change that. I don't know if that's exactly what it's gonna cost. We don't use it, I don't need it. But I just wanna make sure that that kinda gets done this next year, because we need it with that new ADA. And that's really the only ask I've got this year. Everything else has to do with PERS going up, and it's just what, what the contribution level's gonna be. The other thing that I did wanna talk about, though, is for the future, for next year. This is upstairs right now. You can see that our walls are starting to peel. So I'm talking about a remodel of the Gulfport office, and I'll show you exactly what I mean. I'm not asking for fancy stuff, just walls, flooring, and I'll show you the bathroom. And then this is something that we've talked about before when I've been down here, the increase in cases. This is where our office falls short. I really do believe, we only have one, we have two. For our size of office, there are other DA's offices that have five. I'm looking at trying to get a grant, so that I can get one paid for for two years, something like that. I need probably two more. I'm not ready to ask for it, because I wanna bring you all the statistics, and I wanna make sure that if we get them, we know exactly where we're gonna put them, and how we're gonna use them.
Crosby, we are, we have a person now, Ashley, that we might wanna notify her, and have her talk to him, and see if there's some grants available, and let us start working on that.
I would love, because we have the statistics.
Ashley comes to talk, I don't really know her.
I'm gonna text you and her, so you have each other's numbers.
Absolutely. I would love to say, because she can help us, and, because that's another thing that we've got, at no cost to the county, we're getting a new case management system, so that all the DA's offices are talking together, and things like that. But it's also gonna be a better way that we can track the victims that we're working with, the victims that we are helping. And that's what I really wanted to do before I came in here and asked for a new position, is, this is why, compared to the state. But I would love to talk to her, because...
Ashley shouldn't be able to help you, she's on, on contract with us to do grant writing. So let's get, get her in contact with him.
And I've met Ashley before, actually, I think she's fantastic.
She's coming in next Tuesday for her budget.
Then we will work that.
So we'll address what they're due to do.
But here's just some pictures, conditions of the wall.
That's in Gulfport.
Yep, that's upstairs. And then this is our bathroom.
Yes.
It's just, not, not as professional as it should be. We're putting out a much more professional product than that. I would like to...
And you're not as fortunate as the other collective officials that are up there that have fees that have paid for their elevations.
Yeah. Oh, I saw somebody's rape room, and I was like, "Oh, good gracious." I don't know if I'd want a rape room that nice, they'd be hanging out there, they ain't even in their office. But I wanted to show you all that, it's just, it's time, it's time. That's really, that's it for me.
Can I ask you something?
Absolutely.
Are, are you over the child interview room of the skaters?
The safe harbor room?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Where they do that?
Well, the interviews are done over in the Child Advocacy Center canopy across the street.
Right. But we repainted it, painted a little tree instead of, it's upstairs.
I think, if you're talking about our safe harbor room, yes, yes.
So there is, we bought a bunch of toys, this was several years ago, but there's still plenty in my office right here in Gulfport. So if you need, just go get them.
Absolutely.
They're just on the couch. But I figure just probably in five or six years, it might be ready for some.
Oh, absolutely. Because unfortunately, you know, if they really like a toy, they're gonna take it with them. And we're not gonna...
And that's fine.
It really is.
You're not gonna take your own train.
No, and I'll tell you, that room, it's not used every day, but when it's used right, it's, it's amazing, it's amazing. It changes, it definitely changes what's going on in their life. So I, I love that room up there. It's not one that we get to use every day, which is probably a good thing, but when we use it, or it's in trial, and we can put the family in there with the child, and the child's not just, you know, they're staying occupied, it's been... I'm welcome any other questions. I appreciate everything y'all have ever done for us, and I know it's not easy, because I know a lot of people complain, that's the nature of the beast, but...
So two things, we decided yesterday to give a 7% across the board raise.
That's incredible.
And just to bring everyone higher for inflation. What do you, we're confused about the statutes of your pay, the prosecutor, the, what is your take on that?
My take is, there's a supplement that the county pays, and then there's a supplement that is discretionary, that can be paid from our Workless Check Division.
Right.
I don't know that y'all want to agree to pay, I mean, if you, if you want to, then it would change everybody. Right now, I'll just tell you, you got one person who's tied to the judge, okay? I'm not tied to the judge anymore. So then it starts to get out of whack.
I'm sorry, what judge?
The county court.
He's saying tied, the judge meaning his salary.
So you gotta...
The judge's salary, I think is what you mean, right?
Yes, absolutely. It's, it was all easier when the DA's office, the DA's were tied to the circuit court judges. About five, six years ago, that changed. And so these judges gave themselves raises on back-to-back years.
That's right. There was about a $30,000, $35,000 or so raise.
Huge, which the legislature, because...
And that's what, and they didn't tie y'all in with it.
It did.
That's what the deal is.
And so...
But the judges couldn't do it, it had to be the legislature.
Well, they, they lobbied the legislature to get it.
They did it over the years.
That's what it was.
Five or six years ago, the judges got out of having the legislature approve it, and it was tied right to the personnel board. So the judges went to the personnel board, and they got $30,000 to $35,000, which made the legislature very upset. So now there's a whole fight there, but it's throwing everything out of whack. And so now you've got, you've got a county prosecutor, which, I hate talking about other people's stuff, but it, it puts everybody in a very difficult, because I don't wanna badmouth it, I don't wanna say who does more work, I don't wanna point the finger at that stuff, but Harrison County plays, county employees very well, I will tell you that. And I don't know how that's gonna be fixed, but I don't, it's not about me, and what I make, you know, I just want it to be fair, so that we can keep good people in positions that wanna do these, these jobs. If you start paying other positions more, these ADA's work a lot harder than you guys could, and they're gonna say, "I can make just as much money and work 75% of the time."
Right.
I don't wanna talk bad, I'd be happy to have these conversations later, but I'm getting drug into that conversation.
That's what happens, if you're not careful, it gets out of whack, and it causes problems.
And I, I don't wanna come down here and say, "Well, we need to get a statute passed," because all of my pay is statutory.
Right.
And so if, if I'm gonna ask, and as the president of the Mississippi Prosecutors Association, I'm not gonna put forth a bill that says Harrison County DA should be paid more than any other DA, even if we have more cases, more personnel, more, all that. So are y'all getting beat up on that, or are you getting...
No, we just need to make sure we pay, we pay the right...
I know, but I also will tell you, on your statutes, it doesn't say shall, it says may, on a lot of your stuff.
Big difference.
It is a big difference.
Well, what we found, yes, there is, clearly you already know, is the county prosecutor, by statute, statute allows that the public defender get the same as the county prosecutor. And they shall not be, or DA, basically, so what you got the county prosecutor is making approximately 70 or 40. So therein is the problem. Now, the county prosecutor, the public defender wants that county prosecutor's salary. That's why he came in yesterday, that's what he was asking for, he wants that bump. Right now, he is currently about 1,000 less than the DA.
Which once again, if you want me to get into this, it's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous, for a lot of different reasons. And, but it, it's not y'all's fault, you know? But the fact that people are coming in and asking about it, and they're gonna want me to opine on what I really think, I say, "Let's just roll out all the statistics. Let's see how many cases, who's helping law enforcement, who's doing training, who has to go to what events, what are the hours that everybody's putting in?"
I don't, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, we know how hard you work in the board. What the board directed us to do yesterday was go back and try to figure out, exactly get a better picture of what has happened for them. There were conversations about a month ago, and the recommendation at that time, because there's conflict in the statute, was to ask for an AG's opinion to protect y'all.
Okay.
And we, we stand by that, and then whatever they say, because you can interpret the statute two different ways, and if we pay that, if you voted to pay that difference, and AG said that's wrong, then that might expose y'all to some, some liability, so it would be safer and cleaner just to request AG.
Which we're waiting on.
Because...
No, they didn't, they didn't ask for it yet. It was recommended to the public defender to go do that, and they said, "Well, we're not opposed to doing it." Well, it doesn't look like they did it, so what can we ask for? We can do.
Well, let's just...
Because I...
But I'm gonna do it without, you know, this came up yesterday, so we went back and dug this morning and last night, and this is, this is kinda where it stopped. So to protect y'all, I would get, I would recommend that we go get that AG in.
Then also, the question is, is a supplement a salary, or is it a supplement? And is it a supplement that's paid for by Harrison County, or is it one that's paid within your own office? Because if it's within your own office, that supplement's not guaranteed. You know, if you, if you don't have the money, you don't pay it. So if, if, there are certain supplements that I could ask the board to start paying for, but then you're on the hook for it from here on out, and that's never been done before.
And we just, we've always paid the 4,500.
That's right.
For the supplement.
And, and so, I don't know how y'all wanna handle it, or ask for the AG's opinion, I think there are certain workarounds, but it's just, it's out of whack for just the way the judges got those raises, and it brought the county prosecutor up, which brought the public defender up, but the public defender, you know, I'm talking about two county employees, and then you've got a district, it's just, it's out of whack.
They're also doing three counties.
Yes.
The statute has got some conflicts in it.
All right. So we'll get that AG opinion, do we need to do a motion to do that, or just ask you to do it?
It doesn't matter either way.
They haven't done it yet, no.
I'm shaking.
I'll make a motion that we ask for an AG to, oh, a pay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else?
No, I don't wanna bump y'all off time, but I'm happy to answer whatever I can. I like the questions, I just...
That's great.
I don't like to get into that kinda conversation.
It just came up yesterday, so I wanted to give you a chance to...
I'm very happy to brag on the office and show what we do, and it's, it's not for the money, I promise you that, but I just, I worry, if you can make more money doing less work, you're gonna do that, and you're gonna lose, you know, you want that office to be strong.
Yeah.
Maybe not to the degree that we're experiencing with this issue with you and others, but the whole salary, right, issues, when you look at an organization like Harrison County, is all out of whack.
It is.
And it would, it's gonna, it would take, I'm telling you, I don't know if it'd be a commission or a genius to come in and determine, you know, who, who is really working and deserve more or less, and all that kinda stuff.
I couldn't fathom, but what y'all have to look at?
It is, it's out of whack, and I could give you a history of, of why it is, I know why it is.
Right.
I don't know, you know, it'd take a tremendous effort to get all that back in, at level and where it should be, and it's gonna cost a lot to do it.
Yeah.
Because you don't wanna cut people's salaries.
Nope, no. Well, then you just, you get the complaints, and you get everything else.
To equalize them, and to make it equitable, you're gonna have to pay a lot more, it's gonna cost a lot more money.
And see, the military's pretty easy, you know, that's, that's the part I like about that, is you see it right when you walk in, there's no hidden, we're gonna up this career field, or not this career field, it's pretty straight across the board, but I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, keep up the great work.
Good to see you.
All right, county court administrator.
I know the judge picked out, had a verdict this morning, but I don't know if somebody else was coming, except we wanna move on to the county extension.
All right, county extension.
No, but I'll, I'll go for the soil and water board.
Are you here for soil and water conservation?
You're not supposed to be here until 1:15.
Oh, really? Let's go.
That's okay, go ahead.
Let's take them though.
No, you're fast. No, you're fast, go ahead.
Well, I figured...
Not much.
Because I'm here early, and gotta take them.
I'm here today to request the same amount we've been getting in the past, $55,250. We're going through a big restructure from what we normally have been doing for quite a few years, and last year Beth went ahead and she retired, and then we hired a new person, and she was with us for about four months, and then we hired a new person, and she was with us for four months, and like the man before me had said, it's, you can't compete with raises and stuff, so she's moving on to a better job, but in the meantime, we have another young lady with us that will be coming in to fill in her spot, and she may possibly fill that position.
Maybe four more nights.
Four months, let's hope it's a lot longer. But this past year, what we, what we did, we decided to come in and kinda restructure the whole thing, the whole organization, not so much the organization, I guess, but our plans. We're getting to where we're more urban, and, you know, being a rural county like we used to be, it's just not like that anymore. So we've been involved heavily with teacher workshops, we had one this past year, matter of fact, not too long ago, and we actually had 30 teachers from Harrison County come in for a three-day workshop. And what we do is, we bring in groups of speakers from different, different backgrounds that do different things. We had the Audubon Society, we had litter people, we had soils people, different presenters would come in, we'd bring them in, we'd teach them that, and give them curriculum material, and let them know, just to call the office whenever they need some, some help, or if they want somebody to come in and present one day in the classroom and stuff. So we went from, from that, which is pretty good, because you got 30 teachers, and they're gonna reach at least 34 students, you know, so that's one of the things we did. We're still doing our Arbor Day stuff. And then we're also starting to look at going into the schools and coming in, we did a tree planting over in Biloxi, over there, at one of the elementary schools, we've done a field day over at elementary school in Biloxi. But we're looking at this year possibly doing something with the cities, and the municipalities, and the tree, the tree groups, and actually trying to see if we can supply y'all with some trees like that, with some of that funding. And then we're looking at a bunch of other things as time goes on. One of the things, that's another thing, let me introduce the new territory here to us, Mr. James.
The new one?
Yes, sir, the new one. This is Mr. James Penn with NRCS.
Is he a cop, are you a cop?
He, you know, I think so, no, not quite. He actually, what he did was, he took on a position, a new one that they opened up, and he's in the southern region, and it's gonna be urban agriculture. So he's gonna be working, he's still gonna be down here, but he's gonna be, he's got like 23 counties, he's gonna be covered. So it's a new program that NRCS is bringing in, and they're gonna, he's working with that, they're trying to get it all together right now, he and some other people within the state, throughout the state, are doing that. On top of that, we're gonna try to push EWP watershed protection program a little bit more. That's a program where municipalities like yourselves, and the cities, if there's four inches of rain within a 24-hour period, y'all could come to us with some erosion control problems, and we could fund up to, it depends, 50 to 60, up to 75% sometimes, and that...
Would that include, like, replacing the seagoats on the beach, for instance?
I, I don't, I don't think that would fall underneath that. This is actually for stuff like culverts that look like they're fixing to wash out, and sometimes it takes a little while for that money to come back, but I think it was about four or five years ago, Gulfport was gonna get, Gulfport got like over $650,000 through this program. And currently, DeIverville and Long Beach have some money on that. And what's happened is, over the years, we've kinda, you know, you get new people in, new people out, and so the people that are in there now do not know about the program, or they don't understand it. So right now, what we're currently doing is, we're fixing to try to get all of them together again, have one person come in, the main engineer that knows the program and works it for this region, and get him to come in and actually make a presentation that way, they'll all know, and then y'all could possibly start looking at that, that kinda fund through that area there.
Can he get a little closer to the mic, y'all, he's going in and out, and I don't know if it's...
He's right up there almost.
Is that Miss Connie?
It's Miss Connie.
Yes, darling, it's me.
Okay, it's Greg Crochet with the Harrison County Soil and Water Board.
Sorry.
Okay.
I should've put that up there.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, I was talking to him about the EWP, the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, and it's a program that's through NRCS and the Soil and Water Board, and basically, not to get real deep into detail, but if there is over four inches of rain within a 24-hour period, that you can come in, and if there's some projects, like culverts that look like they're about ready to wash out, or you're getting close to a bridge and butting, and, you know, there's some big erosion and stuff, that you can go ahead and apply for this funding. And it's a cost-share program, but still and all, I mean, if they're paying 50%, that's 50% less that you have to worry about. Now, a lot of these programs change, I'm sorry, say it again?
I think that's awesome, and that might be another grant writer thing, too, as well. Would it, would it, or would it fall under just y'all? We have a new bright grant writer.
Well, no, ma'am, basically what'll happen is, let's say we have an event, and y'all have a particular item that your road department comes in and says, "Hey, Miss Connie, we got, you know, we got a culvert that's gonna be blowing out, we feel like, you know, within the next six months or something." And the cause of it was the four inches of rain or more, and so what they'll do is, they'll call us up, we'll get ahold of the engineer, and he'll come out, and he'll look at it. And when they look at it, they will go ahead, and they'll kinda describe what, what needs to be done with it, and then they'll come back, and then it'll depend, and it's gonna depend from job to job on how much they'll pay, and what they're gonna, what they're willing to do. Sometimes you have to wait for the money, so, but still and all, if you can get them to pay 50%, that's 50%. And like I had said, I think if, you know, years start rolling so fast, but I think it might've been five, maybe six years ago or something, Gulfport had close to $650,000 one year that they had picked up from this, which, you know...
I brought funding from those current years.
That sounds interesting. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm not there, but I'm, I'm there in spirit.
Okay, that's good, that's fine, that's fine, I understand that.
I was thinking we'd be volunteering.
Yeah, we, we really need the county, Past Christian...
I think the city of Biloxi could use a lot of that out of the riverfront.
They have not participated in everything. That money.
So Harrison County and Past Christian, you said, are kinda missing out on this list, you've given money to all of these.
Absolutely. When Beth left, she only gave two weeks, so I've been searching through a lot of files and stuff, and from everything, I could search as far back as I could find, the three, the county, Biloxi, and Past Christian are not participating, or haven't participated, as far back as 17.
And I called Biloxi about this, what was it, last year, four, five years?
Well, we're, we've been working with, with Biloxi a good bit more, we're working with Mr. Tisdale a good bit, we've seen him quite a bit.
Which I know, I spoke to him about this, now.
The problem with this, this conditional rain, on 24-hour... Yes, for 24-hour rain, and so, you know, that's probably why we're not really, we did participate, if I recall. Sometime years ago, we did access this, if I recall correctly, but I probably... But our problem is if we got erosion problems and we don't have the rain, we don't meet the criteria, we gotta change it out anyway. But you're right, we need to be aware of this, because when you get that rain, that's when you find out where your problems are. Exactly, exactly. So we're, we're gonna get the, we're getting, we're working on it right now. And actually trying to get the road departments and everybody together to have one presentation. And we're gonna have to come in and that's part of the revamping that we're looking at doing. It's come in and bring them all in and get them updated on what's needed. I think they need to be aware of that. And some conditions of that.
That's our grant writer's number, please keep her in the loop of what things are available.
Yes, ma'am, okay, all right, definitely, all right.
We need to tap in about.
Yeah, um, but Mr. Thad has been working real hard over in Biloxi. And he's been, you know, he's the one that did set up the tree planting with the little kids. It was so funny, because we're out there planting trees and it was right next to the banks. And it was the same day the Thunderbirds were there. And I'm like, I don't know if they like the trees too much this thing, because they're all like, they're watching all the Thunderbirds. But it, I think it's gonna be a good little program for the elementary kids. And then plus, we're gonna get some more trees back on the ground of that, so.
What were you gonna say, ma'am?
I, I was going back to the funding, I said I don't have copies.
Speak louder, please.
I said I don't have copies, but I did find all the way back to seventeen. And from seventeen and up, there's been no participation, other than the three that are on the forms.
You're talking about two thousand seventeen?
Eighteen, nineteen, all the way to twenty-three, there's been no participation.
Since two thousand, so it could have been maybe even before Katrina. I, I don't know how long the program's been in effect, but it's been longer than five, six years.
Right, well, we will not miss out anymore, thank you very much, anything else?
Um, no, just, if y'all can fund us, we certainly appreciate it, you know. So we may, we may hit y'all up for a partial increase maybe in the future here, you know. But for right now, I think we're, like I said, we're just trying to restructure a lot of stuff.
Appreciate you.
And if y'all, if you have any questions about conservation and stuff, I mean, that's another thing. This, this new infrastructure stuff, a lot of money's coming back down for conservation practices. And there's a lot of work going on in the watersheds up above us in Stone and Pearl River and George County. But they're also doing a lot in the bottom six county, I mean, bottom three counties too. Just came from a Mississippi State management, team management meeting yesterday. And over at the cultural research and extension in Biloxi. And there's a lot of good stuff coming down the pike, so.
Please tell Ms. Comstock all about it.
Okay.
We'll see her Tuesday and I'll pull.
Okay.
But we just, we want her to be able to know of all these things.
Okay.
Please tell her.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much.
That's it, okay, thank y'all, appreciate it.
Thank you. Hello, Judge Baker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're ready for coming in.
Come on in. You're the new one and this fell on you.
Hi, good morning, everyone. We are so thankful that Judge McHaff is always able to prepare the budget from year to year. And unfortunately, she was unable to be here this morning. Chandra is here, her court administrator, and I have my new court administrator with me as well. Y'all all know Jill Neecase from working in the clerk's office for many years. And looking at our budget, it is a small budget, it keeps county court working and we are working hard upstairs. We'd love to have you pop in court any day and see what we're doing upstairs, but we are staying busy. The few line items that I'd like to point out that are different than they were. Our travel budget, which is line item four seventy-five, would go up a proposed amount of an increase of five hundred dollars. Travel used to be fifteen hundred and with the mileage rate increasing, it's, used to fluctuate in the forties, forty cents on a dollar and now it's going up to fifty-five, even more than that. And so we'd like to stay within the budget and just being practical, we wanted to increase that to two thousand, which gives each office a thousand dollars. And I don't think that we would, we would be near the two thousand, but that would give us a little room. We do have a new line item, six oh two is the duplication and reproduction. That's new to our budget and what that accounts for are copy paper items and ink for printers. And I don't know why that's never been included before, I think those were coming from a different budget. The IT budget, yes. And so now county court would have its own budget for paper and ink associated with printers. We do have one Canon printer that we share as an office and so we do utilize that Canon the most.
I can't hear y'all at all.
Just speak louder, I'm sorry, I was.
Sorry. Um, we use the Canon printer the most because it has the best tone. It's easier, you can print multiple pages on the Canon and then we do also have some desktop printers we use from time to time. Um, the other increase that we're looking for is with furniture. Line item nine one nine was three thousand for us to split. And this year, we're asking for a total of six thousand where we would each have three thousand. The reason for the increase from my side is looking at the courtroom that I've inherited has not been updated ever. Um, I have some pictures that I'd be happy to show you, but.
We believe you, yeah.
The two items that we're looking at purchasing and have quotes on, the first is a podium for the courtroom. The podium that we're using is from the seventies and it is not on wheels. Um, it is stationary and so the wood is splitting off the podium in the front. When attorneys come to court and they use that podium, they may want it to face the judge and then there are times where they would like to turn it to face the jury box. And we had a jury trial this summer and the attorneys had to physically work together to pick it up and turn it and put it back down and it was awkward. And that was the first time that I really noticed we probably need a new podium. The quote I have from one of our county office supply companies is quoting a podium about five hundred dollars. We did receive a quote under that for two hundred from Amazon, but I'd like to stay with local business. I don't wanna order something from Amazon. Um, and then the second is for the court administrator and clerk's desk in the courtroom. The desk that the court administrator and the clerk choose in our courtroom is very old and is a flat top desk. We're looking for one that has a raised partition, kind of like your desk here. You have a little bit of like a privacy wall almost or back to that desk. Those are already in our circuit courtrooms. Um, and the quote on that is right at, I think it's twelve hundred. So in looking at just those two items, I thought we're really close to what that budget is. And we're just asking for a little bit of an increase and I think Chandra can speak for Judge McHaff.
Yes, Judge McHaff, she apologizes for not being here today, but her husband had surgery this morning, otherwise she would have.
Is he okay?
She asked that you please excuse her.
Of course.
And in regards to the furniture and equipment line, nine one nine, for Judge McHaff's office, we are looking to get a new inner office printer. Um, I do a lot of reproduction and printing and forms for the judge. And the printer that I have now is just not working. Um, it has, I've called them numerous times to come and work on it and IT can do no more to it. So we did get a quote for a actual color printer. And we have two quotes from two different businesses that we do business with here in the county. And it is running about eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars to purchase the printer and then looking at maybe like thirty to forty dollars monthly service fee for them to replace toner and come out and make any repairs to the printer as necessary. But also, um, court reporter chair and court administrator's chair, we are hanging on by a string with our chairs that we sit in and we would like to purchase new chairs to be able to work comfortably because, as you know, we do a lot of sitting down at the computers. So we are hoping that this increase in the line item along with what Judge Baker's office is needing would be accepted. And therefore, we would be able to get our budget, our proposed budget of seven hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and ten in, which is also given an increase from last year due to the judges. With Judge Baker being here, she's now at a full salary for the county court judge, whereas Judge Hughes was not at a full salary because he retired and came back. So that's accounting for the majority of our increase from last year's budget.
I'm curious, why did you break down the salaries by six months instead of just putting your whole year? On the little red lines, you put June. It is. Did the statute totally change within that time or?
It did, the statute was updated and that was going to affect July first each year. And the judges, all of the judges received an increase in pay pursuant to the Supreme Court order that went into effect last. I think they signed it actually in the fall and that went into effect January first, twenty twenty.
But you broke down all the other people too, was that for a reason or?
Yes, ma'am, according to the memorandum we got along with our budget, um, the retirement line item four sixty-five is seventeen point forty percent and retirement goes to nineteen forty percent for the last three months. So we were kind of trying to just break it down to show that difference in what it would be.
Thank you.
Yeah, it shows where the total salary goes. And all of the requests that we're making for line item nine one nine for furniture and office equipment is not anything for Judge McHaff or myself, but it is all for staff and people who actually come to the courtroom.
Now, that six thousand includes what she needs, her chairs.
Yes.
It does, it does. We would like to request at another time, a meeting with the board of supervisors to discuss the Biloxi County courtroom that needs renovation. And what you all to.
I hope.
Visit the county courtroom so that we can get it back up and running. There is, the south facing wall is crumbling and.
So are the windows.
Along with that, yeah, there's some other updates.
What was crumbling?
The south facing wall, it's actually the front wall of the building. Um, when you go into the courtroom, you can see the stucco sheet rock is crumbling underneath some of the windows. Pretty much every window has a crack.
And now new windows have been ordered.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna start replacing those.
Really knows. There's attachments of copies, of pictures of the.
And I think whatever renovations are done, our updates to that courtroom would need to be its own budget. And so we would, we would like.
The courtroom in bad shape for a long time. It's original, it hasn't been since it was built. And the, you know, the south facing wall, that's why we're getting the windows replaced, because it's been leaking. And so we're gonna have to put in, redo the walls and redo. They picked up their badges yesterday.
So it's been the next week or two.
Should be this weekend.
They have to do it on the weekends.
Right, right, nights and weekends, yeah.
And is that just for the wall?
No, that's, that's the windows.
All the windows, I'm sorry. Windows first and then wall and then we go from there.
Because the windows leaked, which is what destroyed the wall.
Well, we actually went and got a contractor to look at it and he gave us a quote on places and we figured out why it was doing it, but it's doing it all, all the way across the front. It was even leaking all the way down into Wisconsin's office from upstairs.
She had that first off.
Yeah.
But you know that new parking lot probably helped the courthouse. Take the old courthouse, make that parking lot.
But we've, we've got it all, the courtroom, got it all figured out.
Yeah, it's, it's the wall that faces, the jury box is attached to that. And in the jury box, it's almost set up like a nineteen fifty soda fountain. The jury chairs are on a pedestal, so you cannot move them, they are where they are. And that was popular at that time.
Yes.
And, um, so we like, we like to just kind of talk about like what's the windows and that wall that.
I don't know if you heard yesterday, but we gave a seven percent across the board raise to all employees to try to come up with fight inflation, so you can let your employees know that.
Oh, great, you're right there.
And all smiles, okay, thank you.
Anything else, Todd?
No, no questions from you guys.
You're good.
Thank you, good to see you again.
Thank you so much. Okay, Willie's here, did we?
No, Willie was here because.
I got you.
Have you not been out there to speak to the grand jury?
I have, they took me right into that grand jury room.
Ah, okay, I'm like, can you see inside there?
I have it on, we're just capital projects, we're gonna start working on that and all of it.
Did the guy, might do the floors?
Thank you.
Come over here.
Mm, it's gonna, it's gonna work a little more, there is a problem that you can be challenging.
Right, and it's way smarter and real estate school has to take that task in that.
Is that the county extension people? Is that the county extension? I can't see. Yes, sure, it is, I was expecting you guys.
There's gotta be a new product.
There is, it's a, it's a like a last American.
Elastomeric, that's how you paint stucco houses.
It encapsulates it, doesn't work at all.
Hello, Mr. Ray, thank you for being here.
I didn't know y'all were asking about a hundred thousand less than what y'all got. Already made some cuts to this thing.
I think you got to report from nineteen eighty-six.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, I think it was that, yeah, had the wrong date on it.
Do you see it? I missed it, I'm sorry.
Tim Ray, extension service.
Okay.
I don't think we have it on our packet.
Yeah, it is, it looks like it is.
Oh, gotcha. Cool, I'm ready to. Hi, speak loudly, please, county is on the speaker.
Yes, how you doing, Miss Connie? Maybe I need to speak loud.
Connie, can you hear? Something happened.
You there? Maybe she's on mute.
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
That's Buddy.
All right, Tim, go ahead.
Well, I just, uh, wanna, you know, I don't think we have any major changes to the current budget, but I do have questions before we finalize the budget, if you will. Y'all know we're getting ready to move locations and a few questions that I have. I know we will be cleaning the building ourselves and we are prepared to do that since it's kind of out up on County Farm Road. And from my understanding, a lot of those facilities up there do their own housekeeping and we are certainly okay with that.
I thought Parks and Rec said they were gonna do it for you.
Well, if that's the case, that, that would be fine, but we don't mind doing it.
Housekeeping.
But it's a small building, it's not, you know, it's not anything overwhelming.
They do their own, I guess, everybody does their own, you know, like this.
Yeah, the sheriff's department, I understand, does their own as well as some of the seniors that are, yeah, seniors that are, yep, that's right.
You don't bring up the issue back in your building.
I, I will.
I think we need to talk about that and get you, you know, get you where you can go on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's what, oh, is that not what you're talking about now?
Well, yeah, I, well, I've got some questions about the, the new building in addition to what Mr. Martin.
Yeah, go ahead and ask questions, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, no, you're, no, that's, that's fine. So, um, we, we definitely need a sign for Harrison County Extension, a new one. I, I don't know if the county provides that. My understanding is, uh, the counties do provide some of those signs for the, for, for extension.
Are you talking about the sign?
A sign that says, Mr., you know, Harrison County Extension.
On the building?
On the building.
On the building.
But, yeah.
Yeah, the road department can do that for you.
Sign, people should be able to do that.
Yeah.
We, we.
We had to pay it back, but yeah.
Yeah, you paid back from your budget.
We'll take it out of this budget.
For the sign.
Okay.
Here, here we are.
Really good deal.
We want, we, we need to purchase a mailbox because we, we spoke to Ms. Karen and we do have a, we do have an official address there at that location, fourteen two eight one County Farm Road is the, is the location. Uh, we, we want to purchase a mailbox and we wanna get a good, uh, larger.
Larger one.
Metal. Metal mailbox.
Now that's no, that should be no issue.
It, it, do we, do we need to, to purchase that and put it up ourselves? It could certainly come out of our budget, that's, that's no issue whatsoever. And we can purchase what we think we need, but would the county be willing to put that up for us?
Our fairgrounds guys are there.
Will be at the road, yes, ma'am.
They can do.
Willie or, or. Somebody should be able to take that.
They're amazing, they'll do anything it needs.
Okay, okay.
They'll do it, just they're ready.
Just have to purchase it.
Yes, ma'am. The question about toilet paper dispensaries and all that stuff, is that something also that we need to purchase with extension?
That should come from.
Willie and them should be, if you talk about dispense, in the restroom?
Yes.
You're talking about dispense, oh, they didn't do that when they were building the.
That's not one there, no matter.
Yeah, you, you just need to put in a request to outside building grounds and let Willie and them do that.
It should have been part of what the building, when they built, I mean, they renovated the building.
Yes, ma'am.
They just didn't, maybe they just haven't done those yet.
Okay.
To put in the dispenser and the paper towels.
I'll, I'll text Mr. Willie and ask him about it.
Just do a little punch list, jump one punch list and.
Yeah, that's.
Don't throw that back, it's eighty-eight.
So my other question along those lines is when we need to get, because you know, the, the cleaners come in to the office now and they replace empty dispensers, tissue dispensers, things like that. Is that something that we need to kind of add a little bit more to the budget to purchase ourselves from our office fund?
We are building the grounds here, the courthouse has been cleaned and the S and P D D built. Because we have two, two.
Right, the, the corners office is there also.
I think they do that where he is.
Well, and that's.
Thirty minutes outside.
Yeah, that's, that kind of goes with.
But they've been currently buying.
Yes, even when we were across the road, they would come in.
Let them buy the supplies and they would just have to send it up there. Because they're currently buying the supplies now. Before they bring tissue.
Yeah.
So are you still, are you still using the S and P D D building?
Currently, yes, ma'am.
Will you be still?
We will still be using that building.
Yeah, just, well, he needs to tell you and you need to get that taken care of. This is not something that boards should be working on.
Well, I totally don't want to.
No, it's all right, I'm not, I'm not doing it, Tim, I'm simply saying. I'm, I'm simply saying that these are things that should be already happened.
I got you.
These are, these are normal, daily things, so get with her and.
Okay.
Just send her a list.
Get that taken care of. Yeah, that's, that shouldn't be.
The rest of this list is null and void.
Yeah, those, those things should be taken care of.
Now, the other proposal I'd like to, to, to ask the board about. Our current building that we're in now, it's plenty room, classroom is, is really nice sized and it does well for us for extension. Of course, we're gonna be moving to the new location, so.
Talk louder, please.
Oh, be, because there is no current room for a classroom at the, at the other location. We're going to be utilizing the existing building that we're in now for that classroom space when, when needed. Our community wellness planners will remain in that building for a period of time. They are Harrison County Extension, just like the rest of us. The difference in our community wellness planners is they do not get county funding. They are, all their funding is through a grant, but they are just as much a part of Harrison County as the rest of us. They go into schools, community centers, all across Harrison County and do health and wellness, food demonstrations, all kind of things to kind of help kids and adults learn more about eating healthy. And so, but right now, we, we do not have room for them, obviously, at the, at the new location. And at the time, this was, this plan was kind of thought up. It was, it was a big question mark of, from us of how they actually fit into extension. They haven't been an organization as long as we have. I mean, in other words, the community wellness planners in counties are a fairly new concept. So this is, so it was not planned for them originally to be there. So I would like to propose a classroom annex be added to the new location under that long overhang. And Mr. Becca, you're, you're familiar with that building. Half of that overhang can be utilized for a classroom.
Okay, you mean outdoor classroom or build it out?
Build it underneath the overhang.
Right.
On one side of it. So it's, it's really wide across, one side of it will give us about thirty-six feet wide of classroom space. And about, I, I want to add them a couple of offices so they can be out there with us instead of being in that location where they are, where we are now by themselves. If they have evening programming, I hate to say, but that area can get a little bit.
Sketchy.
Sketchy. We have pulled up in SWAT teams out there with AKs leaning across the trash can.
Practicing.
Out back, well, not practicing, but aiming toward the hotel back there.
Yes.
You know, and, and that hasn't happened in a while. And it's not as bad as it once was because I think people have become, become familiar with the cameras on the outside and realize that everybody's watching.
Tim, let me ask you a question. Talking about your client, you talking about building the, the facility underneath the facility, exactly what are we talking about? Because are we talking about having to put a roof on it or are you just simply talking about? The reason that I'm asking you is I can't understand why our, our outside building and grounds couldn't go in there and do that.
They can, you just have to approve it because it was only approved to do the office.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so I, I mean, I'm ready to approve it. But let's get in a little, what are you exactly what are you talking about? As far as, are you talking about two by four construction with it? Or what are you talking about, the type of construction that you're requesting underneath that?
Another round.
Just walls, one big wall?
Yeah, Mr. Bart, I think just two by four construction would be, would be sufficient. Now, the catch to that would be the building is gonna be, again, about thirty-six feet wide. Now, and, and, and the overall length, I'm kind of suggesting be about seventy-two feet, okay? From, from front, from front to back, about seventy-two feet. Fifty feet of that would be classroom space. So fifty feet long by thirty-six feet wide would give us more than sufficient, a sufficient amount of classroom space where we can hold all kind of programs out there and wouldn't need to, you know, haul around and see if we can get a facility available for a program.
Now, you're also talking about, of course, water and sewer, and that facility, right?
The, the easy way to do that, I'm, I'm going to suggest only one restroom in that annex. It, it will be located right there, close to where the existing restrooms are now, so you could actually tie in right there.
Yeah, I don't think you need another restroom because if you just put that wrong, we've already got, we've already got two.
Well, and he wants one in there.
Just, just one, but we can tie in to the existing two restrooms.
Yeah.
Instead of, instead of having to go through.
Are the two handicaps accessible that we already put in or it's not?
They are.
They, they are, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, they are.
But you're saying, so that way if you have a class at night.
Have a class at night, yeah, or, or the C W Ps are in there working, they can just go to the restroom and not have to come all the way down to the other room.
It would all be more.
This would be considered an annex, okay? It would be considered an annex, in other words.
Yeah.
They would not be joined to buildings, it would be a, a space between the two. Because you've got to have plumbing there somewhere, so you've got to run that plumbing from the annex into the, or tie it into the existing plumbing for the existing bathrooms. Otherwise, you're gonna have to, to dig through concrete and we don't, we don't want to do that. We, we want to try and save as much.
I just don't, yeah, one more, one second, I don't see why we can't just extend what's already there, why would you separate it?
There's no way to do that, there's no way to do that because you've got two restrooms right there.
Yeah, but you've got entrance doors, if you just do a room and you enter, there's your meeting room and you enter into your space.
We'd rather not people enter into the existing buildings.
To go to the bathroom.
To go to the restroom.
One more thing, if we take fifty feet of the seventy-two feet, remember my dream about the outdoor kitchen? Emerald Gossie already said he would do it. I imagine growing food out there and then letting our children sit around it in the fire.
Including in that, including in that proposal. Included in that proposal, Mr. Becca, is a, a teaching classroom or a teaching kitchen, a demonstration kitchen.
Outdoor?
Indoor. And we can always put up a grill outside, but.
And you get, you still got the other side that's over the open, that's open, that you're gonna do that supervisor.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Oh, yeah, we still, we still have half.
She said one question. Okay, Connie, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Connie.
I was just wondering if we need any contractual adjustments to the contract due to, due to the additional agency or staffing or whatever, do, would we?
I, I wouldn't think so because, are you talking about the?
I think she's talking about personnel.
The wellness people, the wellness people.
They already dated.
You already got the personnel.
Yeah, we already have.
Asking for an increase in personnel.
Yeah, I, I don't think that would be, be needed, Ms. Connie.
Okay, I just, I. It's a little spotty still, I still get a little spotty on our, on my, what I hear, but that's what I saw, a lot of additions and this, things like that. And I was just wondering if, if we are, you know, lawfully able to do all that because of the contracts that we have with different people and different agencies, that's all. And that'll be a Tim question, I think, or a spark.
Yeah, they, they, they are, they are, they are.
Tricia.
Yeah, their, their financial situation is covered by a grant, so everything they do by whatever comes through that grant.
But I, I'm saying, do we need an interlocal with you to do that? You know what I'm saying? Y'all know what I'm getting at, the board.
We'll ask Tim.
Okay.
We, we don't need that, Connie.
For this?
For this.
Tricia's taking her head now.
If, if, because we're not changing the services provided.
Yeah, you're not changing anything.
All we're doing, all we're doing is building a, a, an annex, an annex for with the same.
Okay, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Connie.
In the S and P D D building now, are there two other people using that building besides the Hugh and the Corners office?
They're like a spaniel.
Please, please, please.
Vanish or something?
Oh, 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 yeah.
So one is Otis Livingston and then Dr. Mercy Alves, a newcomer service.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of out of that loop in a way.
Is that true, South Mississippi?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I, I know, I know them, I know them very well, I know, I know when they got it. They, they don't utilize that building every day, they use it like an occasional Saturday, an occasional weekday.
Do you know who allowed it?
Kent Jones is the one that approved it.
They use it what?
I made sure, I made sure.
Amber, make sure we're covered by insurance.
No, this board should be approving any people going into that facility.
Thank you, big help.
And if somebody's in that facility without this board approving it, we need to.
We need to.
Mr. Bart, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Cause I didn't know.
I'm gonna make it real, I'm gonna make this real clear. I didn't approve any of it, I just told, I just told the gentleman who, who came to me asking me about utilizing that. It's not our building, it's a county building, so I can't tell you whether you can or cannot.
We understand.
He knows Mr. Kent very well.
But here's the.
And they, they are great people and they do a great service.
Yeah, but it needs to be approved by the.
I, I understand.
Do they have a key or y'all, somebody lets them in?
They have a key.
They have their own key.
They have a key.
But may I say something? The reason I found this out, the way I stumbled on it.
They are not in our way.
The election, that's fine.
That's not a problem.
The election commission at our direction went and looked at the building and they decided they wanted it. And that's how we stumbled on the fact that this, this group was in there sometimes. Occasionally, had been there in a while. So when I caught, started asking questions, because that particular area that they're in, the election commission's gonna need that.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's how this came up, there's no, nothing on you at all, just.
No, we, it's not.
Nothing on me, I just want to be sure that if it was part of your group, that we knew, okay, so otherwise.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
Oh, you bet.
That was the only reason for that.
Now, the state Extension Service, there's no funding from them to do this, so I help. This is all on the county, is what you're asking for?
It's a county building.
Yeah.
It's a county building, yeah.
I just want to make, yeah, that's fine, I, I just wanted to make sure.
But you might as well go ahead, in my opinion now, I'm on the west door, but I would go ahead and do that anyway.
Okay.
While he's, you know, it's fresh on his mind, the annex, go ahead and just.
Oh, yeah, I think we could go ahead and authorize that. Give, give him with, with outside building and grounds, let's, let's go with that, that's.
You want to make a motion?
That's right, yeah.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion?
Marla made the motion, I second.
To build the annex?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, that's good.
Thank y'all.
All working on that thing.
Can you move before that's done or would you want to wait? I'm just asking.
We, we're gonna, we're gonna move, we're kind of waiting on a few little odd ending things to be finalized.
Seize fire.
Yeah, and, and ceasefire, I mean, it looked to me like they've already ran that fiber. I've seen pink flags, you know, and then, then new boxes and then new poles that said caution.
Quite there yet.
Just stay on them, and I'm trying to.
We're still trying to give them.
Okay, well, I know it's been ran into the building, but apparently it hadn't been ran.
But the reason I just wanted to remind.
So about the month or so.
Ma'am, your guess is good as mine.
Ma'am, if you'll just remind this back then, I'm a jury man.
Yeah, she said that.
Cause they definitely are.
Yeah, they need to move in there.
She said.
Election commission.
She did say that not all of them have had the opportunity to go to the building yet.
Yeah, we, we are certainly aware of, of the election commission needing that building.
I mean, just the front part.
Oh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Our current C W P will be moving down closer or, or where our offices are, kind of across from the classroom.
And I don't know.
So that'll leave most of that up front area. So she said they need about five offices, we showed her exactly what they can utilize and they were, they were well okay with it.
And they needed a place to secure the.
Yeah, they have the machines.
Yes, yes.
Very important.
I, I kind of understood that some things need to be done to their, their existing building, so I'm.
All right, so you get with Willie and tell him we approved it and then we can go from there? Oh, or ping, I'm sorry, yeah. All right, thank you, Tim, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, very exciting.
Thank y'all so much, enjoy your weekend, appreciate y'all.
Appreciate you.
So much.
Good deal.
Hello, Castle ladies, come on in.
How are y'all?
Great, glad as fresh.
Just another day for you.
Good morning, you have a beautiful day.
How's Matt?
How's you doing?
Wonderful, I'm so glad you're part of Castle now.
Thank you.
All right, Tiffany.
Hello. Good, how are you doing?
Great.
So you're just looking at the same amount?
Yes.
They're not colored.
Oh, never mind.
Color, the color must have ran out.
Oh, that's by CTA, fourth from the top.
It's right there, they, you know.
Oh, county extension, I got it.
No, Castle.
Causse, this is Causse.
C A S H.
We're just getting tossed up, I've just.
Oh, we got out of.
County extension, and I see it now, it's out of order.
They were yesterday.
Yeah, because we pulled them.
Yeah.
Oh, right. Oh, right.
Changed people around.
So basically, you just want thirty thousand?
Yeah, and so I just included some information that kinda shows what the impact of what you guys, um, provide for us. And, um, also last year, I can recall lots of questions about expenses and, um, um, funding strains and, and that type of thing. So I included a little bit more information about that, um, on the back. And so, yes, we're just requesting thirty thousand again. Um, I will say that our, um, federal funding is not stable. Um, and so we are definitely looking to come from under that umbrella. We have to do that at a steady pace, but, um, but just the reason why we're requesting the same amount of money.
And how's your building, everything going okay? They got the coolest, it's so like echo kind of.
Yeah, we love the building. Um, so Willie's been working on the air situation, y'all know, it's just.
It's always hot in that's our waiting room, even when it was cord.
Right, right, so it's like one side of the building doesn't really get air and then the other side does. And so, you know, just, but we still are appreciative.
Okay, yes, you do.
Thank you, great job.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Y'all have any questions?
Anybody?
I like the input.
Well, thank you.
That's a lot.
Yeah, and I'm surprised we have more children in Biloxi because Gulfport is so much bigger.
Right, yeah, that was shocking.
Surprising.
That was very shocking.
The twenty-eight percent increase in that.
At least they're being followed, that's the most important thing.
And I will say about the Biloxi, DeIverville, you know those lines? There may be some lines that, that might include some of DeIverville, you know, because it's so difficult to.
Cause there are people living in DeIverville that have a blood C trace.
Right, exactly, exactly, so.
All right, y'all good, anything?
We are.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank y'all so much.
Appreciate y'all coming down, it was fast. Tell Mike she said hi. Okay, good. I know, we miss you. Hello, Mr. Cogan.
Hello.
Come on down.
Thank you.
You're the next contestant.
Thanks for inviting me today.
Thank you. For being early, we appreciate that.
Stuff ahead of time. I had, uh, double marked on my calendar, the original one, and I didn't update it. So, Chris Foray is gonna help me hand these out.
Is that the same? Is that something different that we have?
Think they, I just figured I'd go ahead and print it out and save you the trouble of printing.
What was Chuck telling us about the safety?
It, it went down, the, the contract went down.
I mean, they pay us less or we pay them?
No, we pay them less. We pay those transfer orders on the, on the conference station.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, overall, it's been.
Chuck was in yesterday.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. So I've got a lot of information here, I'm not gonna bog your time down with all of it. I'm gonna focus on the senior citizen part and the Sand Beach is what we do. You do support the fixed route bus service and I want to thank you very much for continuing to do that. You know, with the economy being what it, what it is, we're carrying on the fixed route bus service, we're carrying, uh, the highest level of people that don't have cars, they're going to work and they make under twenty-five thousand dollars, the working poor, uh, really transit dependent people. So I wanna thank you for continuing to support that at the level you do. It's critical to them and it's critical to the hospitality industry to have affordable labor. So, uh, I wanna thank you for that. If you'll go to page four, slide four, I've got a breakdown here. And this is a, a, what a typical month looks like in your senior citizen transportation services. This is from June. We, uh, hit two thousand forty-eight trips requested and then we provided two thousand and four. There were forty-four no-shows and a no-show is just simply somebody books a trip, we pull up, they, they don't, they're not there, they don't go.
Yeah.
It's problematic, but.
But it stops me part of your budget.
Yeah, we don't wanna cut anybody off, you know, we're dealing with senior citizens. I have, I'm a senior citizen myself now, will be in October, I'll be sixty-five and my memory's not what it used to be. So someday I may be riding the bus. Uh, most of what we do is taking people to senior centers. Dallas is big, three hundred Dallas trips.
Three hundred.
Just in June, yes, sir.
Just so.
And, uh, that's, we give that a priority, that's life and death, as you know, for Dallas's patients. We do a lot of that.
And probably, uh, that's more, more than, uh, what, twice a week? Three times a week, you're transporting that person, three times a week?
Yes, sir, typically they go three times a week.
And it's a long process.
I've got a lot of experience with this personally, cause my stepdad was on Dallas's for a couple of years and he went three days a week. And some, some of these people, as you know, Dallas's really beats them up bad.
I'm, I'm well aware.
We lose a lot.
My parents.
It's hard on our drivers, they get attached to the people and, you know, they, they pass on it, it's, it's, it's sad.
It is.
And so, um, that's a great service that y'all support. Medicals are the same, hundred and seventy-five medicals. They can go up to three times a week to medicals. You know, hopefully they don't, but they, and, and so they can grocery shop in once a week. So we do grocery shopping, medicals and senior centers.
Medicals once a week, you said?
Uh, three, three times, yeah.
We're up there.
Uh, yeah, right.
They call you, Kevin, how, how is that, how you set that up?
So how it works.
On a schedule or do they call you?
Um, it can be both.
It can be both.
They can have a regular schedule or they can call and set up an appointment when they need it. What they do is they, uh, they register through the county, your senior service at the county.
Right.
Y'all certify them and then y'all send them to us and then they book the trips directly with us, then they're in our system. So once you certify them, we, we serve them, you don't have to get involved in that, we, we do all of that. It's a, I think it's a model service for what transit systems ought to be doing for seniors.
And, and sometimes too, when y'all go to pick them up and if they're not there or something, don't y'all ask for a wellness call or something? Maybe to have the.
Oh, absolutely.
If they, there are no show, no call.
Yeah, our people, it's typically on the, on the repetitive appointments, it's typically one driver doing the same customer. So they get attached to them and, yeah, if, if they, if something doesn't seem right, they're calling dispatch and we're, we're doing a wellness call and, you know, calling the police and to come check on them. And we work with your senior directors are awesome, by the way. We work directly with them and they know their people and, and so we're talking back and forth about situations with, with individual people, what their challenges are, they may not have family help. So it's, it's really a specialized service for, uh, very time consuming and very expensive, but it, it's an awesome service for our seniors that they really need. So, um, we wanna thank you for that. And then Sand Beach.
I see my question about that.
Okay.
Are, are, hey, Kevin.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good. Um, is, are you, uh, allowed to take anyone in a reclined position on your bus? Or do they all have to be seated or in a wheelchair if you pick them up for a special appointment?
We, we have limitations in what we can do by the equipment. Um, there are federal regulations on that, uh, in terms of what equipment has to be on the bus, what the capacities are in terms of size of a mobility device and weight and, uh, the tie-down area. And we exceed that and so we take any, if we can take somebody, we take them. And so we have a super.
Well, there are other business, there are other businesses that are coming up and I think they have limitations on reclining or upright patients.
Yes, ma'am.
She's talking about that.
Trying to see if you had those, if you fell into that or if you were given more leeway.
We, we have more leeway, we're actually buying two new vans at our low floor that have a huge wheelchair tie-down space that we can be more receptive, more, you know, better service.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a new capability we're gonna have, so we, we can handle that. We don't, we don't want any of these people to not be able to go where they need to go and we don't want them to have to call AMSERV and, and, and have that, that bill, you know, that cost. So we, we wanna do it under your program. So we're bringing some vehicles into the fleet that will take care of those clients that you're talking about, Connie.
That are, are not amatory and have to be in a reclined position.
That's right.
That's one of them, okay.
That's right.
Okay, good deal.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So statistically compared to other cities, I love this to show how little or how well Harrowdale County does compared to Montgomery or the other ones. So, that's great.
Uh, we, we operate with some of the lowest government subsidies in the region. We have lowest costs, as you can see, higher fare box and, and, and the fixed route, uh, because we charge more than, than other transits do and we have fair zones, basically, and, and, uh, other transit, uh, fixed route typically has a free or reduced transfer and we don't. And, uh, so our consumers pay a higher cost of the operating cost, so we're, we're, you know, you can see the pure comparison there, we, we, we do better than, than what most of the others do in, in all those categories and we're proud of that. And we need, we need to be responsible with the money that we ask for and we get and, and, uh, we, we are. So, and you can see we're monitoring that and making sure we're, we are kinda best in class. Um, last thing and I'll certainly answer questions. If you go to page thirteen is the, uh, Sand Beach, the beach bus stations. And our, our ask is down a little bit, uh, because we're not doing a lot of major renovations this coming year, twenty twenty-four. We've done a lot, but I will share with you that we have a much higher level of vandalism and theft than we've ever experienced. Um, loitering, a lot of problems with loitering around these restrooms, you know, homeless people wanting to live there and unfortunately they're vandalizing the place. Years ago, they didn't, uh, you know, uh, thieves, people coming in and like stealing the stainless benches and, and the handrails, the aluminum handrails and it's just a nightmare. And, and, you know, our response to that is that we're adding on more security, CTA security. And I have already had an in-depth conversation with your new sheriff, Haley. And he is committed to helping CTA and me with that and do a better job.
Especially since we gave them beach patrol.
That's right.
So that really should be primary.
That's what we're gonna ask them to do, the beach patrol that you already have there, please have them prioritize those centers.
And add big floodlights, motion detecting floodlights that.
Well, we have lights, you know, it's, it's unfortunate where we've come to, Rebecca. We, we, they're well lit and we have surveillance at, at all of our facilities, but surveillance is not a deterrent anymore. They don't care. It's just a mechanism to document this bad thing that happened. So we know who did it, but they look at it and it's, it, it doesn't mean anything to them. And it's not hard crime, it's just this theft and vandalism and malicious mischief. And they're, you know, the tourists come to town, they use the restrooms, we keep them clean. Uh, we have a contractor that cleans twice a day and we have our staff there once a day.
Wow.
Dedicated and, uh, the tourists go down there and you got people just hanging out and drinking and panhandling and harassing the tourists and there's families down there, you know. It's, it's, it's a, it's a societal problem.
It's a societal trade, all across the nation.
We're doing all we can do in terms of.
It's a shame too, cause people try to have, uh, wedding receptions and they, they use the beach a lot if they weren't fearful.
I know.
I mean, for parties and different, you know, gatherings, but they're afraid to.
You're absolutely right. It's just, nobody wants to be around that. And so we're doing everything we can do. We have, we have, because of how we operate, we're an independent agency. We have, uh, codes of conduct like no loitering. And so we, we, the police can work with us and, and remove them and arrest them for trespassing and they can't always do that on public property, but they do on ours. And, and so we have this relationship, they're helping all they can, but we're just moving them around, you know?
Yeah.
They move and they come back and.
They go somewhere else.
It's, it's an attractive place on the beach and, you know, you got the shade, you got.
Yeah.
You got bathrooms, water.
That's why I said floodlights, if you do a lot at night, they don't wanna sleep.
That's right.
The bright light.
Kevin, your, your request is two hundred, two hundred thousand, six or seven?
He's requesting the same for the transportation and.
It's yours.
Small increase for the seniors.
But what I'm saying is that is total requests are two hundred thousand, two?
That's just for the route, fixed route.
Okay, what else?
Uh, looking for mine, comparison.
I'm trying, trying.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Well, what?
There's a page in here that's got the three together.
It's got it in.
Oh, I got it, yeah, 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 I got you.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, uh, page fourteen, yeah. It's got comparison, it's got the three different, uh, items that you all.
Five hundred, three thousand.
Yes, sir, last year the total of the three was five-ten and this year we're asking for five hundred and three.
Total.
The three total, a little bit less.
You went down seven thousand?
Yeah, that's right, that's right, seven thousand less.
John.
Thank you very much.
You know, I'm a huge fan of what y'all do, it's amazing.
But we couldn't do it without.
You've done an amazing job.
It's really a partnership and, and it's, it's the people we serve, it's, it's enjoyable.
They need you the most.
Yeah, we have, I've been released one employee that rides at their bed work.
Really? My kids wanted to go in there in the beach hopper and we did, it was fun.
Your, your senior trips, uh, transportation that you're talking about, that's, that's county-wide.
Yes, sir.
I mean, anywhere in the county.
Yes, sir, that's right. County-wide, they can go grocery shopping one day a week, they can go to doctor's appointments up to three days a week and they can go to the senior centers, however many days the center's open, they can go, we take them every day to the senior center.
Do you have funding from the other entities?
Pardon me?
Do you have a split where you have the funding from the other entities?
The other, the other funding is all federal. There's no.
I was asking, no city.
Well, on the fixed route, yeah, they heavily, yeah, fixed route, they heavily, they, yeah, they.
The city on the fixed route.
Yes, sir.
It's something that makes you.
Oh, absolutely.
But not, but not.
Yeah, uh, Gulfport's providing like four hundred twenty thousand a year, Biloxi's three hundred ninety-five thousand a year. Uh, DeIverville's providing about eighty-five thousand a year from the fixed route.
But if you don't mind, what is the total budget, uh, with, with your federal?
Our, our total budget is about eight million a year. There's some capital projects, you know, minor capital projects included in that and it's predominantly funded by federal.
Yeah.
The local subsidy, city, county subsidies is probably about, totals probably about twenty to twenty-five percent. Then we generate our own revenue, contracts and fare box and advertising. We did, uh, two hundred thousand a year this year in, in advertising. So we do generate a lot of our own revenue. And so it's a mix, but the, uh, the, the local government subsidy, county and cities included, you know, you can see the chart in there, it's very low compared to others. But we did a peer exchange with, uh, some council members from DeIverville. Couple of weeks ago, we went to Nashville and the city of Nashville funds their transit system and sixty percent of the operating cost. And so our local community is only about a third of that, to give you some perspective To give you some perspective on typically what cities and, you know, local governments are paying.
Why would they be that much of a discrepancy? They have more participants or something? They generate, the revenue generated locally is better?
It, it's a function of a lot bigger system and they don't generate as much fare box as we do. They're, because they have the free transfers. And so being specific, we have a lot of people that live in Gulfport and they work in Biloxi and they commute. They use the beach hopper to commute. Our system, they pay a dollar fifty to board in Biloxi and they pay a dollar fifty at the mall. There's a fair zone. Then when they get to Biloxi, if they transfer to the casino hopper, that's another dollar fifty. In Nashville, they would pay a dollar fifty in Gulfport and that's it.
That's it.
So they're paying three times as much here than they would be in Nashville. So the big cities aren't generating the fare box revenue that we are. And their costs are much higher because most of them are unionized and they live in a big city where their cost of living is super high and ours is low. One of the things that makes our community so attractive, as you know, is the cost of living. So there's a lot of variables there, but.
You bought an electric bus last year or was it the year before?
Twenty twenty-one.
So, is that working better or are you seeing that your federal grant money is going to make you go all green? Or I just, I find that, I see it passing out on the street a lot.
Right. The bus is great. We love it. Very reliable. We run it six days a week. It's very reliable. We've got one. There's a lot of federal money out there to buy buses, alt fuels. I'm glad you asked that question. And so they're very expensive. And we're fortunate to partner with Mississippi Power Company. They paid for a hundred thousand. So the bus costs eight hundred and eighty thousand. It was eighty federal and twenty local. So power company contributed a hundred thousand dollars for the local match and we contributed ninety-eight. And the power company spent forty thousand dollars upgrading the transformers to feed it. So it was a really nice partnership. We like the bus. We don't run too many big buses. So there's a federal mandate for us to reduce our tailpipe emissions by fifty percent by 2030. We're going to do that. And the next milestone is 2050. They want us to be at zero emission. And so that's not really feasible, certainly for us. And so 2050, zero emission, you can only accomplish that by electric bus or hydrogen. There's going to be no, no propane, no C and G, no, no, no hybrid, none of their.
Let me ask you, when you said the power company provided forty thousand for a, was that like the chargers? Charger?
That was to feed the chargers.
To feed the charger. You had to have the power.
That's right.
To feed the charger.
Yes, sir.
So you're not really.
Then you combined the batteries about three days.
The point is, you still got to have that generation.
That's right.
That electrical generation, which is probably coming either from coal or from butane or some other source.
And gas.
But, but, is that only for one bus? What if you had a fleet of them? How much would it cost for you to generate them?
So.
To charge them?
The bus was eight hundred and eighty thousand and right now they're closer to a million. The chargers were one hundred thirty-five thousand, separate from the bus. But he'll charge two buses. And then the power company built the power source for the chargers and we upbuilt it for future expansion. So if we put in more chargers, we don't have to increase our transformer, our farm. Our feeders and our panels are, we're overbuilt, thinking for the future. And so we like electric on the big buses only. So our plan, our short-term plan to 2030 is to phase out all the diesel buses. The dirty diesel's totally out of our fleet. And we're going to use gasoline propane engines, which are very low emission and very low fuel cost, much less than diesel. So we're in the process of converting our small and medium sized vehicles, our trolleys that run on the beach. We have five new trolleys on order. They're going to be propane. And we ordered seven other smaller buses. They're all propane. So we're going to be using propane and phasing out diesel. Right now, the technology, electric technology for small buses and medium buses is just not there. It's expensive. The range is not there and, you know, the chargers are.
How long is the battery supposed to last?
Um, they're, the bus we have is a twelve-year bus and the batteries are supposed to last that long. So we'll, we'll see.
If you had to replace them, Kevin?
Well, the good thing is it's marlin themselves. So it's not like a single battery pack that goes bad. So it's like a bank of batteries. So you could, and even, even one battery module would have segments that you can replace.
Replace it. So it's not the whole thing.
That's right. That's right. So it's, and the battery technology.
Go ahead, Connie.
Thank you. Kevin, you were here, I think, back when I was in the nineties. Didn't we have like Sun Herald and a few others? I don't know if W O X did it or XXD wasn't any existed at that time. But they went to deliver their papers. They went to hydrogen. So it's not a new, it's not a new science. And then the first county car, I think, I had was a hybrid. So are we just, has it improved any? Have we improved the technology? Because it didn't stick for some reason. All our energy saving stuff.
We're, we're running a bunch of hybrids and we like hybrids. That's, that's an interim to the next level to zero emissions. And but hybrid is, in the, in the vehicles we're running, hybrid costs more than propane, running on propane. And because it's still electric. A hybrid, it has a little, very small internal combustion engine running off either gasoline or diesel. And it basically is the generator for the batteries. So for some reason, the hybrid technology is being pushed to the wayside. Everybody is fixated on electric or we're on propane. The manufacturers really are driving it. Manufacturers are phasing out hybrid. And so, you know, you're right. It was, it was a good interim step and we've run, we're still running hybrid every day. Those big low-floor buses are diesel hybrids. They have a little diesel engine charging up the battery pack. So it's good technology. Another option, you know, I was talking about everything lesser than electric and hydrogen's being phased out and, and hybrid is another technology that for some reason, that, you know, the current administration, for whatever reason, the national level is just trying to fixate.
Not buying stock in the right places. I'm sorry. Political question. Shouldn't say that. Okay, thank you. I was just, I was just curious that we were on that track. It could have been phased in, you know, and made, made available to everyone at a reasonable cost. And then all of a sudden we backed completely off of it and now we're going full throttle again and we don't seem to be ready. That's the only question. But thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you so much, Kevin.
If you have more questions, please call.
I think we're good. Here, take this back.
Thank you for letting us be here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, can I have yours? If you want to keep it? Oh, no, you're fine.
Y'all want to keep that?
I don't mind you, but.
You good?
I mean, I just don't want to waste it. I know. But it's nice. Yeah, it's beautiful.
Thank you.
Just reuse it. We had stacks of paperwork. We don't need to.
Everybody comes up here giving you one of this.
I'm freezing and starving too. And I'm trying to get my.
Yeah, we're, it'll one-thirty.
One-thirty. All right.
Thanks again.
We'll be back. Thank y'all.
It says till one-thirty.
And Karen's amazing, by the way, Kevin. Karen Morgan, she's amazing.
She is, isn't she?
I love her.
I'm happy.
Do we need to make a motion to let me chill? We want to, because your drunk was that way.
I mean, you have to.
It's all said and said.
That's why I was holding it up. I was holding that, that square up because I couldn't get it up.
And I went, I went back after that. Because John said, John said I'd be.
Thank you, Pam. Turn it on.
Sure, I'll go eat.
Oh, Jeremy just said it's been stopped.
It'll be stopped?
He said, we've never done it.
Uh, he said the stream has been stopped. So I guess.
I got to stop you.